I like that. One million fifty thousand.
Yeah, I was putting in commas. I'm not used to looking at numbers that big like that.
Yeah, because I started saying, well, that's not so much as a sidebar.
Oh, wait, 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 one more there.
My checks are a lot smaller than that.
Boys and girls, we're ready? We're going to rock.
Good morning. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hmm, that's a nice thing.
Hello. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with item one. Supervisor Anis.
The Tulare County Board of Supervisors are proud to appoint Adam Peck as the Workforce Development Administrator. A Visalia Native, Peck has served since 2003 as Project Director of Nursing and Allied Health Division of the College of Sequoias, where he also worked on budget, program review, and accreditation issues. The Tulare County Workforce Investment Department is an administrative arm of the Workforce Investment Board. It is responsible for the implementation of workforce development programs throughout the county. Principal activities include business retention, job resource services administered through the Tulare County Employment Connection. Before accepting his community college position, Peck was employed as a senior analyst with the Tulare County Workforce Investment Department from 1998 to 2003, and as a job training specialist, 1997 to 1998. Prior to his employment with Tulare County Workforce Investment Department, Peck had worked in the private sector as a recruiter, job replacement, and human resource specialist. Peck is a graduate of Fresno State University Fresno with a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology and a Master's in Public Administration. Adam is a lifelong resident of Tulare County. He and his wife Jennifer, who teaches at Mountain View Elementary School, have two children, Grant Six and Ashley, twenty months. I present to you Adam Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Anis, Chairman Nishida, members of the board, Kristin and County Council. Thank you for that introduction and thank you for bringing me on in this position. As all of you know, and many in the audience know, Joe Daniel has led this organization to much national acclaim over the last couple of decades in helping to meet the workforce development needs of this area. And I appreciate the opportunity to extend that legacy by being even more relevant to the local businesses, to help create the high-skilled workforce that our local economy needs to compete in the 21st century. So I wanted to extend also a thank you to the county for having Kristin Bennett play the interim role as administrator over the last several months. She has done a lot of great things within the organization that, you know, had recently faced some layoffs based on some budget cuts and has been a great kind of lead to me to help get a lot of things organized and underway. And just on behalf of the staff of the entire department, I wanted to extend that thanks to Kristin for her efforts during that time. So, thank you for the appointment. We intend to do great things, and I look forward to working with the Board of Supervisors and continuing the great relationship between the Tulare County Workforce Investment Board and the Board of Supervisors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to the consent calendar, we're going to add item one from the addendum to the consent calendar. And I've been asked to pull item 28 with separate consideration. Sheriff, if there's no further comments, I would move approval of our consent calendar, items four through forty-seven, including addendum item number one, and omitting item number 28. Second? Moving second, please cast your vote.
Was there some, I thought there was someone here that wanted to speak to us on item one when we got to it.
That's a different item.
Okay.
That's item...
Just making sure. Thank you.
If the vote is unanimous, approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wake up. Supervisor Conley?
Okay. We have one of the people on the consent calendar that's here, Peter Alvitri. He's been just, please stand. You've just been pointed to the desk.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving to item 28. Janet Holnig?
Mr. Chair, while she's on her way up, if I may, having worked on the Tulare County Multi-Agency Gang Task Force the last few months, some wonderful things have come out of that, such as the Loop, which is a bus service for youth in Visalia, Goshen, and Ivanhoe. And when we found out about this GREAT grant, I thought it would be appropriate to have our Chief Probation Officer come up and tell a little bit about it and how this ties in with the work that the current county task force is working on.
I think this is one of those good news stories that we like to hear.
Good morning, and I'm very proud to be here to share this information with you. Good morning, Chairman Nishida, members of the board. My name's Jan Honadel, and I'm the Chief Probation Officer, as you mentioned. I want to thank the board for requesting the probation department to provide a short synopsis of our GREAT Resistance. It's actually the GREAT grant, but it's really the Gang Resistance Education and Training Grant out of the feds. I have invited staff who operate the program to do a little bit of a show and tell with you and share you the nature of the grant, the goals of the grant, and our experiences thus far with the grant. I'll begin by introducing Cheryl Summers-Lane, our grant specialist, who can kind of give you a background on the grant itself and the processes. Phil Lozano, who's the supervising probation officer. And ultimately, we're going to hear from Lupi Gomez, who's a PO in charge of many of the schools. She does the school presentations. And importantly, we have Angel Avitia or Frank Ruiz, I'm not sure which was able to get here the quickest, but they're going to be involved in sharing with us about the summer camp element that was basically the introduction of this. The multi-agency gang task force has been oriented toward children and trying to get kids who are not having the kind of experiences that they need to have or maybe that they have when they were my age, to get to where they could have a good summer experience, a good after-school experience, and to be able to have adults with strong role modeling that can help these children. One of the things that's really important is to get to them when they're very young. This program involves 4th graders to 7th graders, and I'll back out. And if you have any questions, I'll come back in. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Phil Lozano. I'm the supervising probation officer. I supervise the GREAT officers as well as our gang unit, Angel of No Drug Court. What I've put together is just a short PowerPoint presentation to discuss what the GREAT program is. We started actually doing this six months ago. We went a little bit more into that. But the GREAT program has done extremely well. It's a lot like the DARE program for drugs. It's in the schools. When I first started working with gangs over seven years ago, it looked like the emphasis was that we were going to put, that if we put officers with children at the 6th, 7th, or 8th grade, that we could stop them from getting into gangs. We've now found out, we've got to start a lot younger. And that's what the GREAT program is structured to do. Again, Tulare County Probation Department, GREAT, Gang Resistance Education and Training. What is GREAT? GREAT program is a school-based law enforcement officer-instructed classroom curriculum. The program's primary objective is prevention and is intended as an immunization against delinquency, youth violence, and gang membership. The history of the program, in 1991, the GREAT program was developed through combined effort of the U.S. Bureau of Alcohol and Tobacco Firearms and Explosives with the Phoenix Police Department. The history of GREAT in Tulare County. The Tulare County Gang Resistance Education and Training, or GREAT, grant was awarded by the U.S. Department of Justice back in November 2006. The program began this last year with our partner's school sites in January 2007. The GREAT program is a school-based life skills component, okay, we've program that is taught by two county probation officers. We have one in the north and one in the south, and it's seven school sites. And those seven school sites, oh, I'm sorry. The funding, the probation department has begun granted funds in the amount of over $249,000 to cover the salary benefits and services and supply costs of two full-time probation officers for one year as provided contract funding for a summer component. In 2008, the probation department has applied for a continued federal funding in the amount of $149,000 to continue the program through 2008. We are currently awaiting this funding on notification from the U.S. Department of Justice. The schools who are currently participating with the GREAT program, Alta Vista, East Porterville, Exeter Unified School District, Hope Elementary, which is just south of Porterville, Pleasantview Elementary, Poplar, Farmersville Unified School District, Kings River Elementary, Kingsburg, and Traver Elementary in Traver. The program is designed to enable youth to develop positive attitudes towards law enforcement officers, avoid conflicts, be responsible, set positive goals, and resist peer pressure. Four important skills that are taught by the GREAT program are, again, personal skills, such as goal setting, decision-making, and anger management. Resistance skills, such as refusal skills, peer pressure, anti-gang, and violence. As we go through social skills, the GREAT, developing positive life skills, empowers our youth to make good decisions and develop pro-social behavior. Continue to provide support for our youth in making lasting positive life changes is one of the most important goals of the probation department. In 2007, the officers will work at the each listed site, teaching a 13-lesson curriculum to approximately 811 6th and 7th graders and a six-week curriculum to approximately 741 4th and 5th. To date, we are just under 1,000. In six months, we've done almost, we've almost taught this curriculum to 1,000 students. So it looks like the numbers are going to be a little higher for 2007. The second part, which makes the GREAT program unique, is it's got the three components. One was the one we just reviewed, the curriculum. The second one is family. Working with gangs, if you do not get family members in the neighborhood involved, it is not going to work. You have to get parental or grandparents, aunts, uncles, involved in helping keeping these kids away from gangs. So the second part is the family component. And again, what happens is the officers will meet with the families, and Officer Gomez could probably go through that a little bit more. But again, we go with the schools, we got teachers. Second part, we bring in the family. And the third component, which we're here to talk about today, is the summer component. The GREAT summer program builds on, is on the school-based curriculum by offering students an opportunity to enhance their social skills, giving them alternatives to gang involvement and adding structure over the summer months. Students chosen are asked to enroll and need a parental guidance signature on membership agreement and an accidental waiver form. The agreement includes a list of rules which each student must agree to follow. The summer component will be handled by contract with probation and CSET. CSET will utilize their Quail Flat camp facility for up to 120 selected students, 30 each time. Each, it's going to be four weeks. We'll be bringing up 30 every week. Attending the five-day camp, which is real big here, no cost to the parents. It is absolutely free for these students to attend. The children attending will be from the ages of nine to 11 years of age, and the camp activities will be age-appropriate, which will include, again, developing core values. They'll have campfires, they'll learn cheers, they'll have a ropes course they're going to go through where they can learn trust, conflict resolution, team projects, and goal setting. They're going to have stories, nature hikes. A lot of these kids probably have never been up into the mountains or ever had the opportunity to go to a camp, and now they're going to get to do this. We're going to have Native American speaker. They're going to go through a cave tour, education, an educational night regarding the history of the redwoods. They'll keep daily journals, education of the forest work, crafts, and conservation skits. The goal of the summer is to provide students with positive activities to relieve the boredom over the summer months. We know what happens when children get bored, they go to the streets, things happen. We want to take them out of that environment and show them something else. Transportation will be provided to Quail Flat by a commercial bus line. We're going to have three sites, Porterville, Visalia, and then the North County, Dinuba area. Actually, I think we're going to Traver. Again, the total cost is $135 per night, which will be paid by the GREAT funds. Again, this is absolutely free to these students. And then we just have photos. I'll probably bring up Officer Gomez. We have photos of this last semester regarding how the program went. You probably just discussed the photos.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Officer Gomez, and I'm considered the GREAT officer.
Very thoughtful.
Sorry. I had the pleasure of working with kids from all over the county, teaching them the GREAT curriculum, and it was probably the most rewarding experience I've ever had. As you will see here in these pictures, these kids were really, really into this program. We had an opportunity to do some role-playing, and they really, really enjoyed that. They actually came into the role and changed their voices and their personality to fit the role, and they were very, very responsive. We had an opportunity also, aside from teaching their curriculum, going out and just hanging out with the kids at school, having lunch with them, doing activities. And we just saw a very rewarding experience. These kids are very excited to go into camp. Some of them have never even left Tulare County. So to know that they would have the opportunity to go to camp for free, their parents wouldn't have to pay for anything, was just beyond them. So we are looking forward to servicing 120 kids and giving them an awesome week at summer camp. We're ready to do some fun activities, and they're ready for it. So I look forward to this new school year. I've had one of my schools kind of give me a warning that if I don't come back, they're going to petition to make sure that I come back. So they're very responsive, they're very excited about this program. When I've talked to the parents, the parents are excited as well. And so we look forward to starting the family component of this program so we can get those parents in to the GREAT program and get them educated and hopefully put some stop to this gang violence.
Pretty much questions?
I had a couple of questions. One is, you've listed the schools that are participating. Is there opportunity for other schools to participate? Are you limited by your resources as far as adding additional schools?
The program right now is limited by our resources. The GREAT program funded through OJP, the Office of Justice Programs, has finite funding. They're also a copywritten program. So they're not encouraging counties and cities to take their materials and go off on their own and create their own GREAT programs. Our officers have to be certified. They had to spend 80 hours in training before they were allowed to go into the school sites and teach the curriculum. So, you know, we've applied for continued funding. It's difficult. We have two full-time officers that are going to be teaching almost 2,000 kids. You know, and that's a big workload. We tried to keep the schools geographically located, North County, South County, so our officers weren't spending half the day traveling just to get to another school site. We appreciate our partner schools because the GREAT program takes about 45 minutes for, you know, each program. You know, these school schedules are packed.
Well, that was my next question, was does your curriculum mesh with the state standards? Because I know these days, it's almost impossible to get into a school site unless you do, so...
It was really difficult for these schools to make this kind of commitment to us. And I think they're all really happy that they did. And we're really happy that they did too. But as far as expansion right now, that's something we'll have to look at, maybe discuss with the feds. I think they would be really happy with what we've done here so far.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is the next item.
Mr. Chair, no other questions, just one quick other word. As we've met with the multi-agency gang task force, the Tulare County Gang Task Force, we've come to narrow on children, the younger the better. And your directions to me as leading that effort was to shoot for the 3rd graders, and that's what, we're getting closer. So just the success of our future is in these children. And so we need to, and whether or not we receive, and it would be my hope, whether or not we receive continued grant funding, if not the GREAT program, to continue something else.
I think we also need to go down to the first grade eventually. But there's an important component that I picked up from your presentation is the involvement of the parents. And I think without that, or the family, without that family involvement, I think we won't be very successful. So I appreciate the fact that this grant has led us into the parental side of gang activity.
That's the one thing you know about probation, is we are there with the families. When we supervise juveniles, we have to supervise families too. So that kind of runs along our lines. I do want to thank Mr. Cox. He has been there for us on our grants, he has been supportive of our gang units, and I want to thank him very much personally for his efforts and everyone else's. I do want to take a minute, and I think Phil's going to invite our partner in this, CSET, just to have a couple of words. Angel Avitia, can I get you to come up? And then we'll leave and let you continue on with your day.
Angel will discuss the actual camp that we'll be working with.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Angel Avitia. I'm with CSET. I'm a senior program coordinator there, and I've been assigned to work with the GREAT program. And never mind the kids, I'm really excited about that. But really, my goal is to work with these kids and really give them a really great opportunity to experience the outdoors. Many of these kids really have never really had that experience. And I think I was lucky enough as a youth to have been able to go to SciCon as a 2nd grader. And it was really something that stuck with me, and that's kind of one of the reasons I was really super excited to work with the kids here. But just to give you a snapshot of what the GREAT program's going to look like at Quail Flats is we're modeling this program after what CSET has in its leadership programs. CSET, for about eight or nine years, has been working several leadership programs, and we've been growing year by year. We're up to 10 leadership programs, and we have some core components that we like to work with. We've put these components in our GREAT program because we think it's real important to work with the kids. Every day is going to focus on a new component, and they'll be working these components throughout the week and utilizing them. Monday, for example, we'll start with developing core values. This gives the kids an opportunity to develop their own rules, their own type of communication patterns, and how these kids are going to get along with each other that week. We're going to guide them, we're going to assist them. But we really want them to have a GREAT investment in this camp. So they'll be developing core values, talking about what they would like to see, and we want them to have input as well. Campfire talks, we're going to be discussing certain topics every night at a campfire, whether it be goals, gang prevention. We want them to start looking forward, whether it be conservation. We're going to be discussing certain topics at every campfire. The second day is when we really hit the pavement and do some work. The second day, the kids will be involved in a ropes course. For years, we've been doing ropes courses with our leadership programs. Ropes courses are very great programs where they allow kids to basically come out of their shell. I've seen a lot of kids that are very shy and timid, just develop huge self-esteem after ropes course. These kids, it's going to be age-appropriate so that we don't scare these kids with high ropes. But it's going to be a ropes course program where these kids are able to get involved in a program, work as a team, because we feel that team building is very important. Also, we're going to be discussing some conflict resolution because these courses are designed to get these kids to engage in team-building programs, and we foresee that there may be some communication conflicts, some other type of conflicts. But we're going to discuss conflict resolution. Wednesday, the kids will be taken to a cave tour. Part of that is to give them an idea of the importance in conservation. We're going to drive through the Sequoia National Park, we're going to go to Crystal Caves. These kids are going to take that tour. We're really going to make conservation and environment a real special issue for us just because we think it's so important that the kids are aware of this at their age. So we're going to come back, we're going to discuss conservation over our campfire. We're going to discuss how these kids can best get involved in recycling and programs that encourage kids to recycle. So we're going to be doing a number of those type of programs. Thursday, we're going to be able to work with Native American groups up there that are going to provide us with cultural awareness programs. So we'll be able to work with these kids and get them exposed to different cultures and get them to recognize other types of people out there and to encourage them that it's okay to be of different cultures. So we break down barriers. And Friday, we'll be evaluating and coming home. And our goal is really to give these kids a good experience that they can bring back home, that they can use on the street, and so that this will make them a stronger child in the community to best avoid gangs. We feel that these core competencies that we've built into the program are going to help kids develop greater self-esteem, develop greater goals, develop a form of a defense mechanism, if you will, for gangs. Because we think if you build those things inside of the kids, kids will best be able to defend themselves on an intellectual and mental level.
Mr. Chair, I think you had half the audience want to sign up.
I was just going to volunteer to pay your fees if you'd like.
I was going to say, though, if you're going to be going on a cave tour, if you see this mark on my forehead. When they say to watch out for the stalactites, they mean it.
Yeah.
I went one-on-one, and it won, and I lost, so...
One of the other things that I forgot to mention was at every session of camp, we're going to be involved in a community service project with forestry department. So we're going to be doing some trail maintenance, maybe clearing up, painting graffiti in certain areas if there's any. So we're going to work closely with the forestry department to do some community service out there. So we're really excited about that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve?
Second.
Moving second, please cast your vote. Vote passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move to item 28. I'd like to ask Chief Riston to please come to the podium.
That was 28.
Oh, excuse me. Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
I'd like to ask Chief Riston, please come to the podium. It is an honor to introduce Chief Riston. And I'm going to read a brief bio on the chief. Chief Riston started his career with the California Department of Forestry in 1964 as a firefighter in Orville. In 1971, he was promoted to captain, and from 1974 to '76, he entered the Management Development Program in Monterey. Obviously, they spotted a leader real early in your career. The program was designed to prepare people to move up the ladder, and it must have prepared Chief Riston very well because he kept moving in very rapidly. In 1976, he was promoted to battalion chief in San Diego and stayed there until 1980. From 1980 to 1984, he was a division chief in Santa Clara before promoting to deputy chief of fire prevention. chief of fire prevention in Monterey. However, they closed the doors after one year, and Chief Riston ended up in Fresno as the deputy chief of fire prevention until 1990. From there, he moved to Visaya and became the unit chief until July 2000, when he retired first time. During his short-lived retirement, he enjoyed spending time with his grandchildren. However duty called, and Chief Riston came back to the California Department of Forestry in January 2006 as unit chief in Tulare County to oversee the transition from the California Department of Forestry to a county-run fire department. He was also appointed as the Tulare County Fire Warden by Tulare County Board of Supervisors and in order to make decisions on behalf of Tulare County. Chief Riston has handled the transition as a true leader, which is what you will hear him call by anyone who has ever worked with him. Chief Riston has a little saying he likes to share with the California Department of Forestry and county fire employees, and this is a very important saying. "We will go through this transition with dignity, integrity, and pride, and when the transition day comes, we will have our heads held high." And that transition day is coming very rapidly this weekend. And speaking with some of his employees, they describe him as a true leader who would not ask anyone to do anything that he would not do himself. He is highly respected, and his employees found out, when his employees found out he was coming back to oversee the transition, there was calmness, assurance, and trust that everything would be okay. We would like to thank Chief Riston for his 42 years of dedicated service and for holding his head high and being a true leader during the past 18 months. So, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present you the seal, which is the highest honor of county candidates. So, in excess of appreciation for your 42 years of service, dedication to the state of California and to Tulare County. Thank you very much, Chief. I'll give that, Tulare Program over to the chief.
I humbly accept it, and on behalf of all the employees of Tulare Unit, because I didn't do it alone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Bennett, I'm Ed Riston, your Tulare Unit Chief and your appointed county fire warden. Thank you for allowing time on your agenda to address the board. I have three items today, my resignation, a brief recap of the 18-months' transition, and introduction of key Tulare Unit employees. First, I submit my resignation as your county fire warden effective July 1, 2007, at 8:00 a.m., when your department assumes responsibility for fire protection and emergency services. I've provided my copy of my letter to the clerk. It has been a privilege to return to state service and as your county fire warden during this transition. I am sure your board anxiously awaits July 1, when your department assumes responsibility. Eighteen months is a long time for a transition, but I assure you, that length of time has been required, and I feel used wisely by both CalFire and Chief Sunderland and his staff. I would like to introduce my supervisor, CalFire's Southern Region Chief, Candace Gregory. Candace?
Who gave me the opportunity to return to the Tulare Unit as chief. Chief Gregory gave me wide latitude to accomplish this assignment, which I appreciate, and she was always available to provide answers when needed. I would also like to introduce Jenny Chandler, Chief Staff Counselor for CalFire. I would also like to express my sincere gratitude to the two Tulare County senior administrators who provided guidance, counsel, and support through this process. Jean Rousseau is no longer with the county, but Kristin Bennett, they were both rock-solid the whole way. Thank you. Before I go any further, I would like to introduce my oldest son, Dan Riston. Dan?
Battalion Chief with the City of Visaya Fire Department. My youngest son was going to be here, called me at 6 o'clock this morning, he was called back to work. David Riston, fire captain, Fresno Kings Range Unit. I would like to give special recognition to a person that has supported me the past 18 months and was a big part of my decision to return to work. My wife Judy has supported me in my chosen profession, especially these last 18 months, when together, we decided to put our plans on hold to allow me to return to work. I could not have accomplished this task without her support. Thank you, Judy.[947.82][947.82](applause) Finally, all the employees of the Tulare Unit who have given a tremendous effort to get through the pain, disappointment, and frustration with the loss of the Tulare County agreement. They have put all that aside, and as true professionals, have risen to the occasion and performed in the highest standards of the fire service. The transition, 18 months ago that transition began, is difficult to think back to some of the initial thoughts and actions. I do know that I challenged the CalFire employees to accomplish this task with dignity, integrity, and pride, and when it was completed, we could walk away with our heads held high. They have met this challenge, and then some. Also, very early on, in a meeting with Jean Rousseau, I explained that Tulare County needed to invest in its fire department. Nothing had been done since I retired five and a half years ago. I had concerns about turning over the department to your new chief and the condition it was in. I was not concerned for CalFire or myself, but for Tulare County. The failure to invest in the fire department had put fire so far behind, I was not sure we could put a big enough patch on in such a short timeframe. However, with the support of the board, fire has taken delivery of 10 command vehicles, taken delivery of one new water tender, taken delivery of 80 new mobile radios, taken delivery of a 52-by-14-foot manufactured home to provide adequate housing for the fire employees at Alpha, have on order and under construction five new fire engines, re-roofed Terabella Fire Station, re-roofed Strathmore's Fire Station. Plans are in place to re-roof Camp Nelson and Pine Mountain. Assisted with the return of fire inspectors to fire, and I must say, the credit goes to Chief Sunderland for that, secured two new vehicles for the fire inspectors. Restaffed Doyle Colony Fire Station, the second busiest station in the county, at no additional cost to the county in March of 2006. That wasn't in game and money, that wasn't anything, that was just good management, take care of the people you had. And with the support of the board, restaffed Springville and Three Rivers in October of With these actions in place, effort turned to the actual transition. CalFire had to take steps to deal with the 60 employees assigned to the Tulare County contract. Procedures were negotiated with the union, and I am proud to say that all CalFire employees have been taken care of. Some chose to retire, some have the opportunity to continue employment with CalFire in the Tulare Unit, some are going to other CalFire units, and some have become employees of Tulare County Fire. An initial inventory of all stations stated county was performed to identify ownership of property. Property adjustments have been made to the appropriate organization. A final inventory will be performed this week on a joint basis, CalFire and Tulare County Fire, to verify that all property is accounted for. During the spring of 2006, a Unified Command Incident Action Plan was prepared, covering all functions of the fire organization. This IAP serves as our guide for the final 12 months. Since January of 2007, a final intensive effort has been made by both CalFire and TCFD to bring the transition to completion by July 1, 2007. All automotive supplies and equipment have been moved to the county road yard. The service centers moved all county property and supplies to the old Woodville Station. All training supplies and equipment have been moved to the new TCFD headquarters. All prevention activities have been transferred to the new TCFD, except for any final fire All county computers are currently at our office, being, having the state software taken off and prepared for a presentation to the county, to put the county software on that's taking place as we speak. The Tulare County Fire Department Emergency Command Center at Moone Grove will begin operation tomorrow morning. This early move was done to assure technical support for radios and emergency phone lines during the regular work week. Tulare County Support Employees begin transitioning to the new fire headquarters in May of 2007 and continue through this week. Tulare County's Emergency Operations Center has moved to fire's new headquarters at Farmersville. CalFire employees, under the direction of Battalion Chief Mike Davidson, were responsible for the sorting, disposal, movement, and tracking of most of the previously mentioned activities. That is not to say that TCFD did not participate, because they did. However, until May of 2007, only the senior staff was on the payroll. CalFire had the resources and ability to get the job done. This is a fairly simple statement of fact. I cannot describe the amount of work and the decisions that had to be made daily in dealing with the great magnitude of property involved. Mike Davidson is a field operations chief, single-handedly willed this project to get done. There was no roadmap, no guide to lead us through the process. Fire resorted to what it does best, plan, organize, direct, and control an event. We put to use what we are trained and experienced at doing. These are the highlights. Again, I cannot describe the amount of work and effort put into the project by CalFire employees. They did perform with dignity, integrity, and pride. I am very proud of the employees of the Tulare Unit. And I have struggled at times, wondering how much CalFire should do in this process. As I said, there was no guide. It was a cooperative effort. It was not easy, and tensions were often high, and reactions spun on a word, a voice inflection, or a facial expression. We worked through the problems. Every decision made by CalFire took into account the needs of TCFD and was based on making sure you succeed with your new department. Next, I would like to introduce the senior staff and company officers of CalFire Unit. If you gentlemen and ladies would please come up, I'd appreciate it. They don't always follow directions. It may take a couple tries. You are nothing without the people you work with, and I have some great people. When I call your name, please raise your hand or wave or something. The division chiefs, operations, Lyndell Yoshimura. Lyndell, unfortunately, can't be here today, is on a fire assignment in Kern County. We still have to go fight fires. Administration, Frank Spanler. Camps, Kirk Fortslander. And State Forest, Jose Medina. These four gentlemen are the keys to any success I might have. They ensure that our plans and programs are carried out. Next, the battalion chiefs. Battalion Chief Felix Rodriguez, Badger Battalion, is on special assignment in Sacramento. Battalion Chief Robin Paredo, Three Rivers Battalion. Battalion Chief Phil Brown, Thule Battalion. Battalion Chief Stan Masichato, Fountain Springs Battalion. Battalion Chief Ken Crowe, Porterville Air Attack Base. Battalion Chief Lisa Maroni, Emergency Command Center. Battalion Chief Tim Harness, North County Battalion. And Battalion Chief Mike Davidson, South County Battalion. Paul Marquez, Fire Prevention. And our Automotive Fleet Manager, Ron Price. The battalion chiefs are the field commanders and program managers. They are on the front line, providing leadership each and every day at emergency incidents or supporting them in some way. Next, representing all the fire captains in the unit are Emmanuel Garcia and Gary Gomez. Gary? These two gentlemen have 65 years of combined service to the citizens of Tulare County. They represent the other 45 captains in the unit who are out there working today. Representing the 40 fire apparatus engineers are Tony Moran. Tony? And Cindy Barnes. They are junior company officers who basically have the same responsibilities as a fire captain when they are on duty. Many thousands of fire captains and engineers have passed through the Tulare Unit over the years, and several have gone on to top senior management and executive positions in CalFire. In fact, there's two in Sacramento today that passed through the Tulare Unit. Next, I would like to, and this is difficult, but offer special recognition to a few people that just were above and beyond. Did Linda show up? Come up, Linda, please, you're hiding back there as usual. Linda Killingsworth, Office Assistant for War for Tulare County Fire, is being recognized for extraordinary efforts in converting all station and equipment inventories to an Excel spreadsheet. This provided a legible, uniform presentation of inventory information that can be electronically maintained for years into the future by county fire. Mrs. Killingsworth accomplished this work in addition to her normal duties. There was an extensive interview workload, which required transcription and reports prepared, several thousand weed abatement letters, which had to be prepared and mailed, and the county fireworks application and permitting process. In addition, all prevention and protection planning files had to be prepared for transfer to the new office. This spring, she went above and beyond to assist CalFire and county fire with the transition process. Linda, I would like to thank you for a job well done.[1677.32][1677.32](applause)
Linda, on behalf of the board, I'd like to present you with a certificate, thank you, and we could not make this transition without your hard work.
Anybody ever follow baseball? Back in the 70s and 80s, there was somebody called Mr. October, Reggie Jackson. We have our own Mr. Transition, Mike Davidson, please come up. Battalion Chief Mike Davidson is being recognized for his outstanding efforts in the transition process this spring. Mike came out of retirement to assist CalFire and county fire in the transition. I asked him to be the field operations chief, my go-to guy, to make sure we met the timeframes laid out in the incident action plan. Little did I know what I turned loose. He immediately began accounting for property and discovered the inventory sheets were not consistent. This is when Mrs. Killingsworth really went to work. Mike pushed all of us to follow through on the IAP. He rolled up his sleeves and went to work, literally seeing that items were moved, disposed of, or reused. Many times at the end of the day, he checked in, physically tired, dirty, and sweaty, because he single-handedly willed this job to be done. Mike, led by example, inspired all of us to step up to the plate and be counted. I could not have reported to you today the accomplishments of CalFire and county fire without the efforts of Battalion Chief Mike Davidson. Mike, thank you for your almost superhuman efforts. Mike, thank you for your almost superhuman efforts, and we all owe you a big thank you for a job well done. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for coming back with the sheet. We appreciate it. Thank you for all your time. Appreciate the recognition. Finally, this one has a little different flair to it. Fire Captain Manuel Garcia, please step forward. Fire Captain Manuel Garcia is being recognized today on his retirement effective June thirtieth, two thousand seven. Fire Captain Garcia is completing forty-two years of continuing service with CAL FIRE, all in the Tulare Unit, and almost exclusively working in the Tulare County contract. Fire Captain Garcia is an outstanding fire officer. His firefighting skills are superior. However, his skills at developing personnel is something that he is really known for. The many hundreds of personnel he has impacted have gone on to distinguished careers in the fire service, and several are now employees of the new Tulare County Fire Department. It only seems fitting that as we bring the eighty-year association of CAL FIRE and Tulare County Fire to a close on July first, two thousand seven, that we recognize Fire Captain Manuel Garcia on the completion of an outstanding career serving the citizens of Tulare County for over one half of those eighty years, forty-two years of dedicated service. Manuel, thank you for a job well done, and congratulations on your. Congratulations, Manuel. Thank you for your service, thank you for the help in the transition, and thanking you now for the help you're going to give us in the future.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of all the employees in the Tulare Unit, thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Tulare County for eighty years. CAL FIRE will still be in the foothills, providing wildland and all risk fire protection to the citizens of Tulare County. Thank you. Don't leave. I'd like to bring you back to the board before you leave. Supervisor Collins?
Oh, my goodness, Chief. Always pragmatic, matter-of-fact, willing to solve problems, but most of all, the passion, I believe, that you brought back with you. I'm making myself emotional, I don't mean to do that to you. But much appreciation for basically dedicating your life to the citizens of Tulare County. So important to all of us, really appreciate it, and I can't say anything else, sorry.
Supervisor Collins?
Chief, I had the wonderful opportunity to watch you during the flooding we had here, and you're a true professional. And I mean that with the highest regards, and I have the highest respect for you, watching you act as chief during that time and taking care of business. You're a wonderful communicator. Some words that were mentioned were integrity, dignity, and I would think those are all capitalized on your resume, because you personify those things in your daily life. So the dignity in which you took care of this transition is appreciated. It could have been a lot different, and again, you are a true professional. Thank you for your many years of service, and thank you for coming back. We very appreciate it.
Chairman, I believe that there's another distinction that Chief Riston holds. I believe he's the only person I know that's got two plaques from Tulare County. And probably Supervisor Maples is very jealous.
Eless.
Jealous of that. I was on the board when you retired once, Ed, and I personally want to thank you for your return to the position that you've held these last eighteen months. And you just shared with me that there'll be a few more months after this, and you'll be continuing to work and look out for the best interest, not only of CAL FIRE, but of Tulare County. I couldn't help but think of General MacArthur as you were standing there this morning. And that is that you have not only the respect of this board and of the county, but also of your staff. And it's easy to see, because as I watched you this morning in your presentation, and your giving credit to the people who work under you, you are, as General MacArthur was known as, the soldier's soldier. You are the firefighter's firefighter. Thank you.
Chief, I'd also like to thank you for not only your hard work, but all the staff's hard work in making this transition, and the knowledge and everything that went into this. And I know you're a hard worker, and I know you jump right in there and fight a fire yourself, so you're somebody that truly is a firefighter's firefighter, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
There's been a lot said about you, Chief. I think the word sums up is class. You handle your position with a lot of class, and that class gives the respect not only of your staff, but of the community. There's been a lot of words said about how much we appreciate the hard work that you've done. I'd like to express at this point in time that for eighty years, CAL FIRE, or CDF, has provided fire service for Tulare County in a professional and excellent, that you've done an excellent job for eighty years. I think it's a real honor to have worked the county, worked with you for eighty years with CAL FIRE. I think it's the people, the engineers, the captains, the battalion chiefs that I want to thank today. They're very special. We have recognized our employees over the last couple of weeks, and you're a chief who recognizes what makes an organization work, and that's the people that you have in your organization, and we also recognize that. So thank you very much to everyone involved during the last eighty years. Thank you.
Chairman, this is an action item?
Yes.
I would like to move then to...
Have a motion? Second. Move and seconded, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Now that's official, Chief Riston can come back one more time. Yeah, third time.
Moving to time diamonds, item two. Public hearing request from Human Health Services.
Good morning, Chairman, Ashida, and members of the board. The passage of Assembly Bill three sixty resulted in a fee increase for what's known as institutions for mental disease. These are otherwise known as skilled nursing facilities. They are essentially locked facilities where we place our persistently mentally ill clients who are significantly impaired. This bill goes into effect July two thousand and seven. The cost we pay for placement of our patients in those facilities is offset by their social security income or their SSI/SSA income. So along with this imposed increase, we're asking the board to move approval for a slight increase in the amount that we use to offset these costs. So the agenda item then is specifically requesting that you conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed increase, subsequently to approve that increase, and finally to allow us to put that increase into effect July two thousand and seven, along with the implementation of the bill.
Questions? Open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to address this issue, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Move and seconded, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Bennett, County Council, I'd like to introduce to you Jason Brett, who was our Public Guardian Conservator. I'm sorry, for the record, my name is Donnie Griffin, Director of Human Services. I'd like to introduce Brett, who is a part of the Human Services team, to bring this fee proposal to you regarding the offset of management costs.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are here today to ask for the board to approve and conduct a public hearing on the fees that the Public Guardian collects. The Public Guardian acts as the conservator for persons who have no other qualified or willing individuals to serve on their behalf. By state statute, we are allowed to collect compensation or commissions for the services that we provide. The Public Guardian basically is bringing to you three types of fees this morning. One is the fees that are charged by myself or deputies who perform work on behalf of our conservates that is billed at a rate of eighty-five dollars an hour. And then we have the clerical and accounting team rate, which is billed slightly different. And then we ask for a consideration and approval for representative payee fees, which help offset some of the costs that when we act as a payee on behalf of our clients. The Public Guardian is somewhat unique, that all of these billing rates are negotiated and approved through the Tulare County Superior Court. County Council has worked extensively with the court and the Public Guardians' office to ensure that our fee structure is similar and situated to counties situated similarly to Tulare County. So with that, I ask that you consider the fee approval and open the public hearing, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Chairman, do you have one? So up to this point, there's been no fee for the services that have been provided at the cost of the county?
There has been fees collected. However, I came on board about eight months ago, and with working with County Council, we felt that it was in the public's best interest to now bring this to you for your consideration.
These are increased fees, Mr. Chairman, if I may. There have always been fees ordered in the event that the conservatee has assets to pay them. Sometimes that just isn't the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the board.
Chairman, move approval?
Second. Move and seconded, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Captain Dowle Cleek with Tulare County Sheriff's Department, members of the board. It's good to be with you this morning. In fact, Sheriff Whitman has asked me to come forward this morning and represent him. I know that we've had some discussion about the good things that are going on with gang prevention and intervention in our county, as we heard this morning with the great program of probation, and share with you that our sheriff is in fact, at this time, he is at the coast, spending time with the Powell children, upwards to over a hundred children that are given an opportunity annually to be taken to the coast and rewarded for their outstanding efforts and citizenships and things that have been developed in their lives within their families. And it's a great opportunity that we have to be able to do that. Today, we're before you, requesting that you approve an internet application for the two thousand seven Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, commonly known as JAG, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand and thirty-seven dollars through the U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance, a division of the U.S. Department of Justice. And also ask that you authorize to sign the inter-local agreement, the MOU, between the County of Tulare and the City of Isaiah, over the expenditure of the two thousand seven JAG grant funds. We, a little history regarding this JAG grant, it's been in existence or in our partnership and our collaborative efforts that we've had with the City of Isaiah since two thousand and five. And during that time, we've really had a great working relationship, in fact, with the City of Isaiah, to recognize our efforts in the communities, in the school districts surrounding all the communities within Tulare County. This has really benefited the Sheriff's Department, the County of Tulare, and all the citizens within our county, to have a crime prevention specialist, an officer dedicated to meeting with the children throughout our county, with over forty-seven school districts and thousands of children, and a growing problem with our gang activities that we have. This is just another effort source that we are proud to say that we are, has been established, and we hope to continue to have an influence in prevention and intervention with our children in Tulare County. Today, I wanted to take just a moment to introduce to you our gang crime prevention Specialist Detective Joe Aguilar. He is in the trenches, and he's every day working with, come on up, Joe, with these children. And I asked him to come with me, to recognize him. Joe is foremost known, he's considered an expert in all of our superior courts in Tulare County, in the gang testimony. He has spent, I'm going to say approximately ten years in our gang violent suppression unit, not only working in suppression, but a great deal, a majority of his time has been spent with actually prevention and intervention throughout many of our areas of Tulare County. So I'd like to allow Joe to just take an opportunity to share with you for just a moment some of the experiences that he's had, how many children he had in effect in working with.
Good morning. The grant itself has allowed me to basically do something that has badly needed to be done throughout the county, not just in some select schools, which is prevention. In the past, we have always concentrated on suppression. Of course, that's a very important thing, when the gangsters go out and commit crimes, they need to be apprehended and punished. Prevention basically is getting to them before they actually get to this type of activity. Currently, I travel the entire county. I work in specific areas. I'll start in the south end, and then work my way up to the north. So far in last year, in O Six, I talked to seven thousand three hundred children, and two hundred and eighteen separate presentations. These include basically presentations that I talk to the children in classroom, also the children that are basically are in a gang, I talk to them separately. If there are issues that go more than just a small talk, then at that time, I will go to their residence, talk to the parents, and then point out to them exactly what the problem is, and some suggestions as to how they can alleviate this. I also work very closely with migrant ed, the HART program, choices, and basically, I do quite a bit of presentations out in the communities to the parents, so that they basically can recognize sometimes the problems. A lot of times, they're either in denial, or they simply don't understand that it could be very dangerous. I travel everything from Hot Springs to Early Mart to Alpa, all the way up to New London, Cutler Rosy, and all the way up to Badger. Each area has their own specific problems, of course, and level of gang activity. In some places, for instance, like Hot Springs, where you would think there would be no gang activity, and there isn't really, it does affect the children. In fact, to the point where I've understood that they have quite a bit of a dropout. When they come down into the valley, and they're actually in the Porterville High School system, they're facing a lot of problems, because that's the first time they come into contact with gang members. What I talk with, those children are basically... they come into contact with gang members. What I talk with those children, basically, how to deal with them, and also their parents, because sometimes, being so afraid, they sometimes get involved in the lifestyle, not so much as joining, but because they're afraid that if they don't participate or join, I mean, participate in some of their activities, they'll get beat up and stuff like that. So that goes from that level to, basically, the Cutler Rosy area, where I'm dealing with second, third generation gang families. And of course, with them, I try and talk to the parents, basically, to explain to them that the way things used to be are not the way they are now. The easy accessibility to weapons, guns in particular, are causing more fatalities out in the streets, and this has changed the whole picture of the whole situation. I talk to classes all the way from first grade to the eighth grade. My core group is the fifth grade to the eighth, of course. But the younger ones, I mostly talk about the bullying issues, which that's basically how the gang starts. And from there, also, like I said, I talk to the kids on all different types of aspects, also that education is basically their main salvation out of all this. I also use my life as an example towards them. Basically, I come from a very poor background, farmworking family, and a lot of them are able to identify with me. And because of that, a lot of them are more able to trust me, and I see a lot of good response through them. So using all of those things, I believe that we've been pretty effective. Last year, I was able to cover the entire county. And what I do is I start on one end, and I spend an entire week. During the week time, I will talk to the students, the children that are basically having problems, and then also talk to the staff, or the teachers, so that they can recognize the signs, because a lot of times, they really don't understand. I've seen pictures hanging on the walls, and from the kids, basically, out in the yards and stuff like that, and I'll look at that, and I'll see kids flashing gang signs. And I'll tell the teachers, do you know they're flashing gang signs? They say, no, they're just throwing bunny ears or something. I said, no, they're throwing gang signs. And who are those students, by the way? And it's things like that, and it's slowly starting to be an awareness so that now, we're starting to see more positive results, because of the staff understanding exactly what they're dealing with now. So hopefully, this year will be more productive, now that I've gotten to know some of the teachers. They've asked me to do more things. In the past, I've asked them to do certain things, like, for instance, to set up meetings with the parents, and they didn't realize how important that was. So they were sent some letters, and some responded, some not. And now they make it into a big event. I've talked to whole communities about this issues. So this is something that, hopefully, working together with different agencies, we can make a dent in this problem. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, when Detective Aguilar started, he was six foot eight and weighed five hundred pounds. We're spreading him thin.
Yes, that's.
My point for that. When you talk about two hundred meetings, seven thousand kids, my understanding, you get to see most of these kids one time. And that's just not enough, from what we're finding with this. And I've actually heard out of Joe's mouth, I will go anywhere, anytime, to work with the kids and parents. And so, you know, I want to recognize your dedication. And I can verify, you do the south to the north. Two weeks before the school year was up, I saw you out in Ivanhoe. And it was wonderful to see how the kids reacted to this uniformed officer walking on to the school site. They respect, I notice they respected you. And I want to commend you for the work you do, but also recognize at the same time, you are spread awful thin. And it would be nice to have two or three of you out there doing this, to spend more time and have more contacts with those kids.
Yes, kids, I've noticed some, because unfortunately, the only time it comes into their lives is when something bad is happening. And the family disturbances, things like that. And to see us, basically, as a role model, where we're not there to harm anyone or do anything, and even explain to them why we even exist. A lot of times, they're surprised that we're there to help them. It's things that you would think would be common sense, but unfortunately, from some of the home environments that they come from, that's something that's never explained to them. We're the boogeymen, so.
And I lived that Saturday night, working a DUI checkpoint for the City of Isaya. Several children were, actually had to exit their cars, as mom and dad had their car towed, and their only experience that they'd had was mommy and daddy saying, why are you taking my car? So we need more of these positive contacts with the children in the schools. So thank you for what you do, and it's my goal to put you in a copy machine and duplicate you several times, if we can.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I was just going to say, I wanted to say how much I appreciate Captain Clegg bringing forward this program and giving us more. Oftentimes, we just rubber stamp, I don't say rubber stamps, but we approve these grant applications, and we don't have the follow-up of what's actually happening with them. And I just wanted to say that, in conjunction with the presentation we had earlier, we know this is the tip of the iceberg. There are so many different programs out there, church organizations, you know, different types of groups, like Boys and Girls Clubs and so forth, all working towards the same goal. And I think it's important for us to see that, that it's not just the Sheriff's Department, it's not just the probation department, but it really is a collective community effort that makes the difference. And I wanted to commend the detective, and I think one other thing you'd add to your long list of things that you're visiting people is recruitment. And I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but literally, you are an example to people, not only of how you avoid getting into gang activity, but also of a future and a hope that is different from what is often seen out there. And in my mind, we not only raise a lot of crops around here, if you look, I remember the two thousand census, it still strikes me as just being profound, that one-third of the population is between the ages zero and nineteen. We need to be developing our own deputies detectives for the sheriff's operation, probation officers, from our own young people. And they need to see that that is a viable option for them. This is something they can do, and a person like yourself can be such a great role model. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. Currently, the two thousand six funding will take this program through approximately March of two thousand eight. We have generally some time to do, to work on our funding to continue this program. With our proposal, request before your board now for the two thousand seven JAG grant, the application process started. We're hopeful that we'll be able to continue with this. And if so, we will pick right up from March of two thousand eight with the funding that will come to us in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We're also very hopeful that maybe opportunities will come for us to expand. I have heard you today that there is just Joe, you know, on behalf of what the Sheriff's Department's doing, but in the collaborative effort in the big picture of things and what's going on in Tulare County, we could use literally dozens of Detective Aguilar's. And we're hopeful that, with the funding that we might get from this, that we can make a huge difference in our community. Thank you very much.
One of the reasons we took this off the consent calendar is exactly what Supervisor Worley mentioned, is we often rubber stamp a program that's been in place for a while, and sometimes we need to ask what those programs are accomplishing. I think with what the probation department presented today about the camp, that a hundred kids are going to, what Joe's doing out in the field, what Supervisor Cox is bringing all these groups together, it's very obvious that we need to look at prevention versus incarceration. We just can't keep building jail cells. And this is a community problem. Law enforcement is part of the answer, but it's a small part of the answer compared to the community. So thank you very much for all your efforts. And it's an action item.
Chairman, I'd be glad to.
Go ahead. I want to speak.
Moving seconded, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item fifty, resource management.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Henry Hash, Resource Management Agency. We're pleased to be here before you today to talk a little bit about Measure R and our transit expansion plan. As you recall, last November, Tulare County residents passed the half-ten transportation sales tax, which as a result, millions of dollars of money will be coming to Tulare County for transportation. And part of the money, about five hundred thousand dollars per year, is to be spent on transit expansion. With that, with the partnership of our TCAG, we hired Moore and Associate, they're an expert in the field, to do a study and prepare a report for us, to tell us what are the best areas and the most effective areas within Tulare County to expand our transit system. And I would like to talk about Moore and Associate a little bit, and I would like to turn the presentation to Mr. Jim Moore, who is here to walk you through his report. But Moore and Associate is a public transit-focused organization. They have done extensive work in County of Tulare, and they are generally pretty practical, and the results of the recommendation has been really higher and most effective ridership. Before I turn it to Mr. Moore, I would like to thank you people, starting with your board, for your support on this entire area, especially the transit. One of the items in transit expansion is the loop, Supervisor Cox's favorite. And I would like to really give a special thanks to Supervisor Cox for his leadership on this. He really did a lot of work and effort behind this to get this going. We are very, very excited right now. I think we are about to see one of the most successful new initiatives in Tulare County, and perhaps the state of California. With that, before I turn it to Mr. Moore, I would like to thank some of my staff for wanting, Mr. Mike Elsie, our associate director, has been very involved. And thank you to Mike. John Brew and Dan Fox, and Ted Smalley, they've had a very good partnership to get this rolling. And with your permission, I'd like to turn it to Mr. Jim Moore.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Hash. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Moore. Mr. Hash mentioned our firm was retained late last year to initially conduct the county's transit development plan, which in essence is a five-year roadmap of how transit service is performing, as well as opportunities for further development of the system. Shortly after we embarked on that project, the voters of Tulare County passed Measure R, which is another wonderful opportunity for further enhancing the level of service that the county has provided for over a thirty-year period of time. And so my primary goal today is to share with you how we came about developing the Measure R expenditure recommendation plan, the specifics of those recommendations, and then, of course, to ask for your direction on that. Slide. As you know, it's a half-ten sales tax approved by the voters in November of two thousand and six, which will provide over six hundred and fifty million dollars across a thirty-year horizon. The county's aspect will include approximately five hundred thousand dollars per year targeted for transit service expansion. We define service expansion as either increased frequency, i.e. the buses would operate more frequently along assigned routes. We provide expanded hours, such as longer hours during the weekdays or on weekends. And also, the measure allows for the necessary capital support to support the operational recommendations. In this case, there's a set aside for, or a proposed set aside, for one point two million dollars for CNG vehicles. The methodology that Moore and Associates employed in, through discussions with the county staff, was to expand the service based on market preference. In a concurrent survey of transit riders, thirty percent indicated a number-one desire for Saturday service, while twenty-nine percent indicated a number-one preference for more frequent service along existing routes. So we came up with a, both taking into account what the actual riders, the current riders, have shown a preference for, what are other market research in terms of what non-writers would have a desire for, as well as building upon our strengths. We determined the most likely scenario would be to extend weekday service hours on those four key routes. And then also to introduce Saturday service on those four key routes. On a system-wide basis, we're talking about approximately eleven additional weekday service hours, additional sixteen hours on a Saturday, which would be the first ever, which comes out to approximately five hundred thousand dollars in additional operating costs, using the current cost indicator of fifty-five dollars an hour. And just kind of bring this into perspective, we're currently spending approximately six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars on our operation. If we add in the additional five hundred and seven thousand dollars and change, that would be available under the Measure R annual allocation. It would come to the figure that you see in the lower right corner. So now, when we combine this with the transit development plan, which is underway and will be completed by August, we see that we'd be able to increase annual revenue hours by eighteen percent, introduce a new day of service Saturday. And by making these changes, the county also would be eligible for a Fairbox recovery waiver from the state of California under the Transportation Development Act. We'd have up to three fiscal years to get back up to the required performance indicator. Again, should the board of supervisors wish, I mean, here is a map of where the service is currently being provided and what the recommended service enhancements, where they would be located. And with that, I stand ready to respond to any questions you may have.
I had a question, Mr. Moore. On the transit buses, the one point two million, does this include, that's the part that would come from the county, but does it also include accessing funds from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, as they have funding available to help support this effort?
I want to make sure I understand your question. The one point two million dollars that is proposed for inclusion in the expenditure plan is specific to Measure R monies. In partnership, but one of my roles with the county staff is also to seek to secure additional funds, either programmed or discretionary.
Mr. Fox, are you going to respond to that?
Dan Fox, Transit Manager, Tulare County Area Transit. The one point two million in Measure R is specifically for Measure R funds. Other funds can be used in addition to that, and that's over the life of the term, thirty years. And we plan to use it as matching funds to other federal funds.
And I just, I knew you'd probably say that, but I wanted to highlight that, that this is an example of Measure R dollars being expanded. We talk about what Measure R does bring in and of itself, but when you look at the opportunities then to provide, as you say, the matching funds for other grants, whether it's from the air district or federal or state grants, the ability to mushroom and make these funds so much greater is greatly multiplied. And that's something we want to be sure that the public is aware. They made a pretty darn good deal, and they voted for Measure R.
Yes, they did. It can be, for every twenty percent we spend on, we get eighty percent return on the federal dollar. So out of a hundred percent, we only spend twenty. And if we use that one point two million as twenty percent, then it's expanded by four times.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, answer to Supervisor Worley. Supervisor, this money does not include the money available. We have not, but we are planning to apply for the money to see if we can get it.
Other questions?
And I think that's.
And I think that's a very sage point that you brought up, because the transit development plan, again, will outline over a five-year period, both programmed and discretionary monies, funding opportunities on both the capital and an operating side. And as you, as you pointed out so well, one of the great benefits of the Measure R is the tremendous flexibility for which the money can be applied. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. The one thing we found out during the mental health outreach program, Proposition 63, is that transportation was a very big issue for people receiving services. And with expanding our, our hours, it has, it will help alleviate some of those problems.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, I would move approval of item 50.
Second.
Moving second, please cast your vote. Most carries unanimously. Before we go to item 51, there's an error in the agenda. We will not be adjourning as Tulare County Board of Supervisors to remain as Redevelopment Agency. We'll stay in session as Board of Supervisors.
Good.
Chairman Ashida, members of the board. William Hader, Assistant Director, Community and Development Services, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Staffs before you this morning requesting a ordinance to be adopted and mending the agency's programs to acquire property by eminent domain. Petler Rossi, Early Mart, Goshen, Ivanhoe, Pixley, Poplar Cotton Center, Rich Grove, and Traver. As per the governor's signing of Senate Bill 53, all agencies are required to adopt a program on how they intend to use eminent domain. This is an effort by the state to ensure that it is used properly, and any changes to the eminent domain in any project area would therefore, after adoption of this ordinance, require a formal amendment of each redevelopment plan. For the history of our agency, we have only used eminent domain once, and that was to acquire easements under county roads for the installation of infrastructure such as sewer and water systems. We have never, ever used the eminent domain powers of the agency to acquire private property, acquire somebody's residence, or business. The focus of the agency has always been on infrastructure, and therein lies where we have used our powers in the past, and most likely would be in the future. Questions from your board?
Questions? Ashina? Ashana?
Chairman, most approve.
Second.
Moving second, please cast your vote. Most carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to item number 52, Risk Management.
Mr. Chairman, we are here today before you, as we often are late in the year, asking for your approval of excess insurance for workers' compensation. As you know, the county is self-insured for workers' compensation. We have two quotes, technically, one is a quote and one is what's called an indication. Brian Fromm, our risk manager, is going to review those with you. We will be then happy to answer any questions. I do want to make some clarifications as to some of the differences. And then we do have Cliff Dunbar with Buckman Mitchell Insurance that wishes to address this item as well. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Bennet, Ms. Bels Lang. As Ms. Bels Lang pointed out, we do have workers' comp insurance, and we purchase, we're self-insured for the first $1 million of workers' comp, and we purchase excess insurance for any one event that might exceed $1 million. During the past three years that we've been self-insured, we've had one event with two injuries, a fatal accident that you're probably all familiar with in 2005, that did not exceed that $1 million limit. It may eventually, but it has not yet. We received numerous quotes from our broker, Buckman Mitchell, did a fine job of providing several alternatives, as we requested from them, and they did a very good job of providing lots of alternatives. The two that rose to the top as being the most viable alternatives are presented here. The one from Buckman Mitchell is from Arch Insurance, a financially sound insurance company from Missouri, who offered to cover that excess insurance for a total cost of about $615,230. And we estimate this because it is based on payroll and subject to audit and correct it at the end of the year for your actual payroll. Another alternative that was offered by the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority was for $385,000 for the same base payroll for the entire year. There are some differences in the offerings. Arch is an insurance company, CSAC is a JPA, and the JPA does not cover safety officers' 4850 salary, Labor Code Section 4850 salary continuation benefits. So there's a, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison here. And a second, or a third difference is that the, the Arch coverage is for statutory, meaning they will pay the entire costs of what is due for any particular injury, whereas the JPA is capped coverage, and capped at $300,000. So you would have to have several multiple freezing catastrophic kinds of injuries to reach that.
Mr. Fromm, you said $300,000. I think you meant $300 million.
Thank you for that correction. You're absolutely right. I did mean to say $300 million, a couple more zeros here and there.
Mr. Chair.
Quick question. Not covering the, the safety personnel, what percentage of the payroll is the safety? And I'm sure you've done a cost analysis to see what those numbers would be if they were light coverage.
It amounts to approximately $15,000 per injured employee that would exceed $1 million. We've had none of those in the past three years.
My, my question is, you said the, the CSAC does not cover the safety.
That is correct.
If you, if you were to back out the safety portion out of the Arch...
I, I think there's some confusion, if I might, Mr. Chairman. It's not that they don't cover the safety, it's that they don't cover the 4850 portion, which is the, the amount between the statutory amount paid by workers' compensation and the salary for police officers.
The gap.
It's the gap. Exactly, the gap.
You just had to say the gap.
Okay, so the gap, yes. And remember, we are self-insured, so we would have to have a claim which arose exceeded $1 million, and the cost is estimated at approximately $150,000 if 10 employees were injured in a single event.
Excuse me, the JPA pool, in contrast to the insurance, consists of our $1 million self-insured retention, covered by $4 million in the pool, that is excess of our $1 million, bringing it up to $5 million in coverage. And then that pool purchases $300 million in excess of that, actually $295 million in excess, so that there's $300 million in coverage. And again, that would only be tapped in a multiple catastrophe-type situation. We've just covered that 4850 difference. Statutory coverage means they cover all of the benefits paid. The capped coverage at $300 million would be the maximum covered through the JPA. We are currently in, Tulare County's currently in the Joint Powers Authority for both its liability coverage and its property coverage. It seems to be popular with other counties. 51 counties are in this work comp excess JPA, seven out of eight San Joaquin counties. Back to the 54 counties in CSAC, 51 are included. Only Ventura, San Diego, and Tulare are not in this excess workers' comp program. An excess workers' comp was the inaugural program that created CSAC Excess Insurance Authority in 1979. They now have a very large program, 1,600 entities, collecting $65 million a year. And staff recommendation is for saving the $230,000. We found that pretty persuasive, about 60% of what the next nearest offering was. Any questions for me?
Sorry?
Chairman, I'd like to stress that we have had an excellent working relationship with Buckman Mitchell Insurance, and with Mr. Dunbar in particular. And our recommendation is made solely on the basis of your board's strategic plan, where we're looking to make our operations as efficient as possible at the lowest cost to the taxpayer. Certainly is not a, a desire to make a change because we're unhappy with Buckman Mitchell Insurance, and I want to stress that and state that for the public.
Cliff Dunbar, Chairman of the Board, Chief Executive Officer of Buckman Mitchell. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, with all due respect to risk management, we have had a good working relationship, but we have an old-fashioned disagreement. And so we, we would like to present a few items for the board to look at. If the clerk could deliver these, please. The top one is for the chairman, and the rest can be handed out. The county has had an excess policy for the last three years. Prior to that, you were a fully insured program for seven years. Now, risk management is recommending the county join a risk-sharing pool with reduced coverages and the potential for long-term liabilities due to the assessment potential of the pool. An insurance policy is a contract with a set premium for a 12-month period. The pool rate is based on an estimate of future losses of all the participants, and can be assessed for as long as there are open claims. Some claims last decades. The EIA's own financials show pool deficits in the years 1997, 1998, 1999, 2000, 2001, 2002, and 2003. The 2004 and 2006 pools do not show deficits at this time, but the claims are too new to have fully developed. Excuse me, I just lost my place here with my other notes. The county was fully insured, first-dollar coverage, no deductible, from 1997 to 2004. Therefore, the county has no future liabilities, while those in the pool do. Every year that you are a participant in a pool, stacks the exposure to future costs and future dollars. How much will the deposit rate of 206 increase with future assessments, three to five to eight years out? Then compound that with new liabilities for each subsequent pool year. When comparing pool to an excess policy, the future loss development should be considered. Attached is a flash report from the Workers' Compensation Executive that was issued last Wednesday, June 20th, 2007. And I would like to, for the record, refer to the first two paragraphs of this executive report. Flash report: Loss ratios, claims costs rise in 2006. Cracks are starting to show once again in California workers' comp system, based on the latest report issued by the Workers' Compensation Insurance Rating Bureau. Costs on a per-claim basis are climbing. Loss ratios are rising, as are combined ratios, based on data collected by the Bureau through March 31st of this year. Aggregate insured losses grew 6.7% last year to $6.3 billion, from $5.9 billion in 2005. It was the first increase in three years, all since reforms had been initiated, according to the Bureau. There was also an increase in the accident-year loss ratio in 2006, after six years of steadily falling loss ratios. The average loss ratio climbed to 36.8% in 2006, up from an eye-popping low of 27.2% the year prior, according to WCIRB's estimates. And like the loss ratio, the accident-year combined ratio also jumped for the first time in six years, up a hefty 15 percentage points to 65% from 50% in 2005. As has been reported by Workers' Comp Executive, the theory behind these increasing ratios is now that most questionable and smaller claims have been vetted from the system, while more complex and more expensive claims remain, driving averages upward. Now, if you go back to my letter in the last paragraph. As you can see, there will be higher-than-expected future loss development and unknown costs. The county's own loss experience is a prime example of the loss development. In 1996, the county went to a fully insured program and transferred all of their previous open claims to American International Group. The cost to the county was $7,250,000, and AIG agreed to pay the administration, pay the claims and administer the claims until they were settled, but up to a maximum total cost of $12,500,000. Within seven years, their paid and reserve values were over $12 million. And a little over seven years, AIG lost several million dollars in the transaction and saved the county the cost of what turned out to be a high-loss development cost. In joining the EIA pool, the county is exposing itself to major catastrophic losses in, in the other parts of the state. In the event of a major earthquake, fire, or terrorist act, the pool assets could be challenged. Our county's proportionate share would be prorated, further increasing its liabilities and reducing coverage. In the last 11 years, we have worked with five risk managers. Our decades of service and knowledge is a steady link to the historical facts and coverages surrounding your workers' compensation program. Please refer to our example of the loss portfolio transfer and the high-loss development that occurred. With our guidance and knowledge, we were able to help AIG recover over $2 million in excess claims costs. If we had not been involved, and more than likely, the county would have future costs on the old claims, once the cost exceeded the total limit of $12,500,000. At this point, it appears no future dollars will be needed. And one thing I'd like to point out, too, we are your broker, but as a resident of Tulare County, I would be up here, if there was another broker up here in my spot, I would be supporting these facts as a, as a resident, not just as your broker. The conclusions we come to: Excess insurance is a known cost in today's dollars. When considering, considering participating in the EIA self-funded pool, you must account for future loss development costs. Accuracy of actuarial estimates: As previously noted, EI pool is currently in a deficit seven out of the 10 past years. Financial ramifications of future workers' compensation legislation. Claims costs of other cities, counties, and special districts within the EIA pool. Investment earnings and return on investments by the pool. As pointed out, the excess policy has statutory limits, which is unlimited coverage. The 4850 coverages are included, the fire and police, and it is non-assessable. This more than makes up, in my mind, for the perceived savings in the pool. This year's excess policy and related fees are over $400,000, or 40% less than what the county paid last year, with no reduction in coverages, and with the increased exposure, as we all saw today, of running a fire department. Buckman Mitchell's decades of service brings stability and historical knowledge that has saved the county millions of dollars of past and future costs. I would venture to say that our county is the most stable and healthy in the state when it comes to its current workers' compensation program. And I have two attachments here. Brian did a good job of comparing the two programs. We've done the same thing. And then there's one other attachment. As he said, we gave several alternate quotes, and we put in these two quotes. These are two of the many. We feel that the $50 million limit and the $25 million limit, the rates are lower than what CSAC is charging, and we feel with a catastrophe situation, all that $50 million is yours. You're not sharing in the $300 million with several counties and cities that could be in the same catastrophe. Are there any questions?
I would ask a question. I want you, Chairman, to view, Mr. Dunbar, and if you don't have the answer, perhaps our staff does. Noting the fact that we've had, that there are these deficits that have been seven out of the past 10 years with the EIA pool, have their rates been increased over those periods of time to... of time to reflect on those deficits?
Michelle?
I'll touch the back of it.
While it's true that there have been individual years in which there are deficits, the CSAC program does its assessments, and I might add, the opportunity for dividends if they over-collect money. On a ten-year basis, they pool ten years of money. And so while there are individual years that might have deficit, there are individual years that have over-collection. And as they pool them, this is the situation, as they see it now and going forward. For two thousand and seven, they expect to end the year with thirty-seven million dollars in unallocated money. I hesitate to call it excess. It's capital that they have enough to pay our particular or their particular pool seven times over, five million times seven being thirty-five million. And the outlook is for that to grow, actually to an embarrassment of riches, where in two thousand and nine, they would probably have to lower rates some more. Their target funding is to be between the forty and forty-seven million dollars in excess or capital money. That answer your question, sir?
Well, in part, but do you know, this program is fairly new when they set it up. Has it... have they had increased costs since, I mean, in terms of charges, from the time they began the program? Or is it... was it kind of set up and it's been steady ever since?
You're talking about the workers' comp? The workers' comp program has been in effect since nineteen seventy-nine. I'm not sure...
The EIA excess coverage has?
Yes, that was the first EIA program that was set up. So that program's been in effect since nineteen seventy-nine. They certainly have had premium increases from time to time. I think your... is your question, have they had premium increases because of pool deficiencies?
Yes.
Know the answer to that question?
Yes, they... every year, they make adjustments to...
Okay. Because the reason I ask the question is, it relates back to something Mr. Dunbar said, which is, if you... we're looking at jumping into the pool at a point in time, and the point, I think, being made is that they have perhaps these liabilities that are latent and laying out there that may come back and affect the pool later on. One of the concerns I had was that if, let's say, they had a rate that's been steady, and in the meantime, they've had these deficits, but they've not increased the fee, then we might find ourselves in a situation where we're just kind of lowball. We get in, and then next year, find, hoop, a big jump in the rates to make up for those. If they've been making steady increases along the way, and we now find them, as your chart seems to show there, well-funded, and yet even at these increased rates, the county still would end up saving two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, I think, that gives some assurance to me that we're not looking at a lowball figure that would be followed up immediately by a big, big increase. That was what I was asking... why I was asking the question.
I suspect that's a possibility, and I'm certain Mr. Dunbar will be sampling the market as he did this year and bringing us alternative quotes that we would be more than eager to listen to.
Mr. Sheriff, I mean, in regards to that statement, there's a couple alternates on the back page here. Have you looked at those as well? And so I'm looking at the limits, fifty million, twenty-five million. What's the downside to taking an alternate like that?
We felt that the...
We've heard, we had claims of twelve million over several years, and we're looking at policies that have, you know, three, four times that coverage.
Although it's true we're pooled with fifty-one other counties and sixteen-hundred other public entities, for any one event, we get that entire three-hundred-million dollars. And it's true that if the earthquake in San Francisco causes catastrophic damage in Tulare County, we would be in the same event. We consider that a remote possibility and think that the three-hundred-million-dollar coverage for one event in Tulare County is a stronger place to be.
Possibility of having a fifty-million-dollar event?
There is. It's remote.
And what kind of event would that be?
Fifty people seriously injured in the... in a bombing in our government plaza? Any group event of that sort, a terrorist act... terrorist event would do it.
Boiler explosion and fire could do it. It doesn't have to be a terrorist event, but it would have to be a very substantial catastrophic event.
Any other questions?
Not necessarily a question, Mr. Chairman. These are... this is tough dilemmas, you know, as we sit here. Because on one hand, we have the known. On the other hand, we have the seemingly less expensive and yet still unknown. And I see that our neighbors are in there. I know that when we took that bold step of doing our... some... I say bold. And I sort of mean that, to become self-insured because it took this board, although three of you weren't here. A lot of time and consideration whether we were going to do that. Yeah. And then there's always the talk industry-wide, is that, okay, well, you do it for a while, and then you try to roll the dice and get back before it's too late, you know? And how do you do that? How do you judge that? And I'm feeling kind of in that little bit of a dilemma here. Part of me is looking at the safety of the known compared to the enticement of the pooled. I think sometimes as they... and maybe you can answer this for me, Mr. Frometh, as that pool increases... it increases the funding to the pool because more people join the pool, but it also increases the opportunity for loss.
That's correct. And the theory is that they charge appropriate rates for that?
I understand, but as we gather more... as more folks join the pool, obviously, that's... okay, we have money. Because I think it's telling when you... what did you mention? Fifty-one counties and sixteen-hundred other entities?
Mostly cities, but there are other...
Cities, schools.
Some special districts, I believe, also in the...
Yeah.
We didn't bring you all sixteen-hundred because...
Well, even all fifty-one. Thank you. That would have been too much.
I'm sure... I'm... problem I have is, quite honestly, understanding all of this in such a short time with four pages of information in front of me. Having not, you know, read much beyond this, I'm, you know, I'm finding it difficult to be real sure about what to do right this minute. Are there... are we limited to where we have a time period to act? Are we having to act today?
Our excess insurance expires June thirtieth. So if we... and I have to say, Supervisor, in our own defense of staff and in defense of our broker, this is typical of the insurance industry every year.
Been there, done that many times as a businessman.
It's just, I've heard various explanations for why they do it, but they always give us information pretty late in the game. If we were not to have excess insurance and there were to be a huge injury on July second or July fourth, when we now have a fire department that's out putting out fires, the county would have the statutory liability to pay that claim if it exceeded a million dollars. So that's the risk that you take if you do not act today. We will not... we will be bare for excess coverage until we obtain it, one way or the other. And your board does not meet again until July eighteenth, I believe, seventeen.
I have a question as to the liabilities that we are going to incur as a self... not self-help, but as a county fire department, where events of five or more are very possible in a fire. So, you know, that's a concern of mine, that some of these other counties do not have the same liability factor because they have Cal Fire. That's something that's an unknown for us.
Mr. Chairman, you see this, Stan Simpson with Buckman Mitchell. I think the bottom line to this, in response to Supervisor Cox's statement about understanding it, the bottom line about your decision now is approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars savings, starting the program July first, two oh seven, between the fixed cost that Arch has given you, other than the payroll changing, the rate stays the same versus what... their rate will stay the same, but versus what could be fluctuation because of all the reasons given, catastrophes, no catastrophes. If nothing happens and you choose the pool, you've made two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for this twelve months. After that, who knows? The bottom line is, the group is assessable. It's done well over a period of years for all these counties and cities and so forth. But as Cliff has pointed out, your county, through some really diligent study the last six or seven years, has come to the surface as really probably the leader in handling their worker comp program. To me, you got to take the thirty-thousand dollars, nothing happens, and say, is it worth it this year, or do I put myself behind the eight ball the next year, the next year, and the following year? You have statutory coverage. You have an assessable situation if you go into the pool. If we were buying insurance, and we do largely at our office, we would look at the same things the county risk managers are looking at, or we would look at, and that's deductibles, assessments, and we never buy an assessment policy, fixed costs and all that type of stuff. One thing that really bothers me as a citizen of this county is what went on two hours ago and what you just mentioned about the fire deal. Who knows if there'd be a catastrophe and all that? But I believe I read in the newspaper last week and saw on the news that nine South Carolina firefighters lost their lives because a wall went down. Can somebody say it will never happen in the county of Tulare? I don't think so, anywhere in the county of Kings or the city of San Francisco or whatever. And that really bothers me. Two years ago, most of you know, I was president of the Insurance Brokers and Association of the West, in which we had to deal that year with the workers' compensation problem. And in my opinion, fortunately, because I was on that side, and I think you were too, our local, from President Senator Chuck Pachugian was the writer of the workers' comp measure that brought the benefits down and all that. And in the last couple of three years, comp rates overall have averaged down sixty to fifty percent in this state. As a matter of fact, this quote that Cliff has for you this year in the excess is what, thirty-nine-point-six percent premium than you paid last year, or the current year we're still in. So you've got that savings, which is roughly two or three-hundred-thousand already, and four-hundred-thousand in the bag. Everything I read or hear, and I'm in contact almost daily with Sacramento, is there is a huge move by the plaintiff attorneys for workers' comp, the unions, and the medical providers, primarily the chiropractors, to revise by bills to increase the benefits that were decreased by Pachugian. If that passes, and I don't know that it will, but if that passes down the line, doesn't matter what program you're going to be under, the costs are going to start escalating back up. But if you're assuming more of the risk, it's going to be more burdensome. And I think I can only end with this statement, and I actually said it three or four years ago, and I'm going to do it both ways, burden hands worth two in a bush. And as my grandfather said, and one of the principals of Buckman Mitchell, and I quote, and it's on our wall, "Come on down. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cruelty." And I think Supervisor Cox, that's what you're really looking at, you know? And we're going to save a couple hundred grand now, and I hope we do, if you go that way. But if we don't, are we going to get nailed for millions down the line? Thank you for the chance to speak.
Chairman, if I might... I wouldn't disagree with anything that's been said. There are a few things I would disagree with. There have only been four risk managers, not five. I think it's a question...
You forgot to count Travis, with all due respect.
Oh, okay. Right. The... he wasn't... he wasn't a risk manager of mine, so I guess that's why I forgot him. The issue for your board is whether you want to assume some risk. You already assume some risk with your liability and property insurance, because it's set up exactly the same way. There's a possibility for a deficiency assessment. We have not received any in that program to date. If rates go up, they're going to go up no matter what program you're in, because of the kind of thing Mr. Simpson was discussing, the effort to undo reform. I don't think that has anything to do with your decision today. I think it just has to do with whether or not you wish to assume some risk in the hope of realizing some savings. If you do not, there is nothing the matter with the Arch quote. It's a good company. All the companies that were brought to us were good companies. He hasn't brought us anybody from, you know, the offshore in the Bahamas, or anything like that. These are all CICA guaranteed companies, which is a requirement of ours. So it's just, as often as your decision, how much risk do you wish to assume?
How risky are we feeling? You know, there's a part of me with the... in anticipation of the fire thing, we are stepping off out into our own world after the comfort of Mother Cal Fire, whatever comfort that may have been, for eighty years. Since we don't have any experience with that yet, there's a part of me that's saying, maybe we just stay the course for another year, and I'm sure staff will bring this back to us, and then we'll have a year's worth of experience with our fire unit, if that's any comparison. I mean, the first one that wants to save money at the same time without having that new fire unit is... it is a big deal for us.
I went to the greeting of the new hires for Tulare County Fire, and when they went into their classes, they're finishing right now, and the age group in there is not young. None of their experienced.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing, Supervisor.
That's one of the reasons we went that way, because they're experienced, but they're not spring chickens, as my dad used to say. So that's a consideration.
Some of us haven't been spring chickens for a long time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if the law stays in place, the reforms that were referred to by Mr. Simpson and Mr. Dunbar, and because we did really intense physical exams of our incoming firefighters, no matter what their age, in the event that they had a pre-existing condition which has worsened by Tulare County, because of the change in the law, we only have to pay for a proportional share rather than the entire thing. That was a rather dramatic change, and it's one of the reasons that your board wanted us to do pre-employment physicals, to take advantage of that. So that issue, I would suggest to you is... doesn't really play into this. The other issue, the, you know, what do you... how lucky are you feeling today, or whatever you want to call it? I think that is the issue before you.
Well, I don't... excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to discount the work that staff has done, and you guys are just doing what we ask you to do as we... how many years ago, as I said, we took that bold step off the cliff into, you know, we haven't done this for a while, and last time we did, maybe it wasn't that great to be self-insured, so, but let's try it again. So I don't want to negate or discount any of the work that you've done or the due diligence. I mean, that's still important in my mind. I just have that little nagging thing out there. I'm sorry, Supervisor Worthley.
I think Supervisor Cox...
Somebody.
If I can, just one last thing. I think I feel kind of a bit like Connie does. I would feel more comfortable maybe staying our course this year and having more education next year about this in advance, instead of the few pages that we received before the meeting. Personally, I don't feel I've been given enough information to make the change this time.
Supervisor Worthley? Chairman, I was going to say that one of the things that's, I don't know, rather persuasive to me here is that, you know, we're always interested in trying to save funds, obviously, for the county, but we do see a four-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction of, if you will, of savings even built into this quote. So...
Yes.
The question is, you know, we're trying to... you know, we could save up to six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars over the last year, but we were already... we would already be saving four-hundred-thousand dollars if we went with this quote. And then, I don't have a problem with the idea that we would, you know, continue this matter for another year and look at it, because we will have then the experience of a year of our own fire service. It'll give us another year to look and see how the CSAC excess coverage is proceeding, and maybe we'll feel more comfortable next year making that change. One thing I was going to say to Mr... in response to something Mr. Cox said, is that risk assessment is a very complex issue. And so I think, I'm not sure what, when Mr. Cox says, "I don't have enough information." I don't know if you can give us enough information, but certainly, you know, we have to, at some point, have to rely upon our staff and their experience and their risk analysis and say, either I understand... I agree, I support your position based upon your analysis, or... either I understand, I agree, I support your position based upon your analysis, or not. I mean, I think, again, I don't expect to become a statistician or a risk expert in this position. We do have to rely upon people to do that for us. But I have no problem with the idea that we would take advantage of the $400,000 savings and stay with, and go with Arch, and then minimize that risk issue for the coming year. And I still think it's a win-win situation for the county, because it does reflect substantial savings over the year before.
And then next year, I expect Supervisor Cox to really dug into this, as he does so well.
Take a couple classes.
Mr. Chairman, if-
It's an action item.
It is, if I may. Each year, we look at all of the quotes. The last insurer, excess insurer, Keenan, who was brought to us by BMI, they were preferred over CSAC EIA at that time. We brought them, their rates were better. So each year, we continue to do that. And we also do ask every year, is this the year that the markets changed and we need to be looking at going from self-insurance back to full insurance? Not this year, probably not next year, maybe the year after that, Mr. Simpson says.
Has he said that every year, though?
No, no, actually not. So we will continue to look at and try to bring you the best quotes that we can. And of course, it's the final decision, is your decision.
This is an action item, since we have a matter of days. Chair and King's a motion.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion to, I don't even know what that's gonna be, stay where we're at?
No, actually, it's a new insurer. The motion would be to authorize the chairman to sign all agreements necessary to obtain excess coverage with Arch.
Okay, what she said.
Second.
Please cast your vote. Vote passes in the House.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to item 53, Mr. Forbes.
Mr. Forbes?
It's your lucky day. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors.
So I guess we are feeling lucky.
Jeff Forbes, Board Supervisor's Office. Item 53 is a request for the federal government to provide assistance in reducing the risk of catastrophic forest fire in the Sierra and Sequoia National Forest. Increased brush, downed diseased trees, provide fuel for a potential fire. The situation is also threatening our watershed by reducing the runoff in a time when we are in desperate need of water, especially given the potential loss with the San Joaquin River settlement. In recent years, lawsuits have slowed down the ability to log and thin in the Sierra and Sequoia National Forest. In addition, this has also created hardships on local sawmills, their employees, and the community. There are few people who are going to address this issue in more detail, so at this time, we'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
We have Kent Duson, and he's gonna come up and say a few words.
Let me start off with Steve Brink.
Oh, okay.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, I'm Steve Brink. I'm Vice President for Public Resources for the California Forest Reassociation. We essentially have as our membership most of the remaining wood products industry left in the state, as well as many of the biomass power plants. I have before you a map, and I have copies for you to take home with you, to remind you of the fire threat in the state, which I'm sure I don't have to remind you of, but-
Lake Tahoe's still on fire, isn't it?
Still on fire.
Yeah, I noticed that Lake Tahoe is not considered among the higher-risk areas either.
You noticed that.
It's yellow to me from here.
I apologize, this particular map is titled biomass energy, but that, of course, is the opportunity. The map itself is the fire threat. And essentially, as I'm sure you well know, the national forests of the Sierra Nevada Mountains have 7.5 million acres at risk to catastrophic fire. Just the national forests, of course, of which the Sierra and Sequoia National Forests are part of that. And I think you probably also know that the Forest Service's own management policy for those forests is to focus on putting fuel breaks on the landscape, which is a good idea. But that strategy, over the next 15 to 20 years, will only address 20% of the landscape that's currently at risk. And so, in essence, the Forest Service's own policy is to let the forest burn up. And what has happened since the late 80s, Sierra and Sequoia National Forests produced 180 million board feet a year. You know, I'm sure you'll remember that you had five sawmills in the immediate area at the time. Today, those two forests are producing about 10 million board feet per year, a 90% reduction, in part due to pending litigation. Now, further, I'd remind you of the research that the state has undertaken through the climate action team of where we're likely going in California for the rest of this century. Their conclusions are 3 to 11-degree temperature rise, longer hotter drier summers, up to a 90% reduction in spring snowpack, and up to a 55% increase in wildfire. The overall result of the Forest Service's management policies and the litigation they face is that the one remaining sawmill, namely Sierra Forest Products and their cogeneration power plant and their landscaping business are in jeopardy and likely to close next winter unless something dramatic is done quickly. And Kent will talk more about that in a second. Fortunately, Senator Feinstein, I spoke with her personally last Wednesday, she's well aware of the situation. She's instructed the Forest Service to enter into mediation with the litigants. You all well know what mitigation and conflict resolution processes are like. They can be rather lengthy at best. It's not binding, so anybody can pull out at any time if they don't like the way it's going. But the problem we have is, right now, for the one remaining piece of infrastructure south of Sonora. It's the only one left. So we urge the board to unanimously pass this resolution as before you, and to speak directly to Senator Feinstein, that we need to do something now. The mediation effort is a good first step, but there's got to be wood supply now to save this infrastructure. And in the long run, we need new federal legislation. And she's well aware, and you're well aware, of the Herger Feinstein Quincy Library Group legislation. It will end in 2009. That piece of legislation, which was supposed to help this process along, of fuels reduction along with other objectives, has only accomplished 20% of what it intended to accomplish, primarily because of appeals and litigation. And that's just through up and down the Sierras. And last, I would suggest to, when you have an opportunity, to remind the governor and his staff that those wildfires are not good for AB 32 implementation. The Tahoe, Lake Tahoe wildfire probably has produced something in the neighborhood of 15,000 tons of CO2 emissions so far from that one fire. That's obviously in the wrong direction. The governor's own climate action team expects a 55% increase in wildfires by the end of the century. That all counts in the wrong direction as far as AB 32 implementation. Whereas good, active forest management will absorb more carbon out of the air, create a healthy environment for infrastructure, reduce CO2 emissions, because the Forest Service's own researchers say that there would be a 50 to 60% reduction in wildfires if they had their mess cleaned up, and we had healthy forests again. So with that, I'll stop and let Kent offer a few words.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Supervisors. My name is Kent Duson, General Manager of Sierra Forest Products. We're a sawmill located in Terabella, southeast Tulare County. We've been in business for 39 years, and I want to say we appreciate the efforts of this board over the last four decades, supporting our industry and our company. We're a sawmill, we take logs and produce from the logs lumber. The products we produce are building materials, products for molding and millwork, pencils that go to China, there are products that go to China to be made into pencils. And we also have always utilized 100% of the log. We have quite a wide landscaping decorative bark product, from mulch to decorative barks, make orchid bark for the orchid growers. If there's a need out there, we try to fill that little niche. Most of our products move from our local area in Southern California into the southwest part of the country. Historically, we've always run a two-shift operation. As Steve mentioned, back in 1994, there are actually five sawmills. Most northern in our little working area is Madera, North Fork, Aubrey, Dinuba, and ourselves. Three of the mills went away in 1994, one went away in 2000, and we're the last sawmill left. Of those five mills, there were nine working shifts. Most of the mills were on two-shift operations, 16 hours a day. We're down to running just one shift, we're the only mill left. Our next closest mill is up in Sonora. There's a whole bunch of forests south of Yosemite that drastically are crying for suntap of forest management. Steve mentioned the demise of these sawmills back in 1994 and 2000 just didn't happen. It's not like we ran out of trees. But it was basically, it was a federal decision at the Forest Service that we basically are going to let nature take its course. We're gonna back off managing our forests. And the trend really hasn't turned around much since the early 1990s. And the terrible result is a loss of an industry infrastructure. And also, there's quite a correlation of the increase of these catastrophic fires. We read about yesterday morning, ones down Tehachapi and up at Tahoe. My little story here for the folks that love our mountains, which I really do, is take Sequoia National Forest east of us. Since 1990, we have lost almost 25% of the land base of Sequoia National Forest to catastrophic fire. Most recently, the McNally Fire burned about three years ago, burned 160,000 acres at a cost of almost $60 million to suppress. And that's not even talking about the resource damage that occurred over that six-week-old fire. Also, what's lost is the habitat that we're supposed to be taking care of. Habitat for the California spotted owl and the Pacific fisher are lost. I mean, it's not to be had again for at least probably another 150 years. Make this really short. Our problem is we are running out of time. As I mentioned earlier, that we typically, up until about a year and a half ago, always had a one to two years' worth of supply ahead of us. We lost a six-month's worth of supply by a court in San Francisco about a year and a half ago. Took away and joined four of our sales. We immediately went from a 12-hour operating day to an eight-hour day after that occurred. And the whole issue, these are four sales up in the Sequoia National Forest, several in the monument, several outside the monument. These were sales that were in place intact when the monument was created in 2000. But the judge really didn't make an issue whether trees need to be managed or taken from a monument. His whole issue was over a little critter, a black weasel-like animal called the Pacific fisher. And the Pacific fisher is kind of a new California spotted owl, something environmentalists, I say, have almost created. But the issue there is, the Forest Service, before the hearing, actually brought in the federal agency, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It actually had them spend a couple days. Fish and Wildlife actually consulted in a two-page report and came up with a conclusion the greatest risk to the fisher is not logging or vegetation management, it's a loss of habitat by catastrophic fire. They commended the Forest Service for this light-type touch on the land base, but these sales primarily were to protect the communities of the Green Horn Summit, Sugarloaf, and also protect some of the giant sequoia groves directly east of Porterville. To make a long story short again, the court ignored the good-stuff Fish and Wildlife Service and joined these projects. May 18th, just about a month ago, the last gamma crash that really got us in high gear here was the same environmental groups filed suit up on the Sierra National Forest on quite a series of projects in the Shaver Lake area to, these are actually research projects called the Kings River Projects. They're gonna study what happens to water quality, quantity, due to various types of vegetation management, continue looking at the California owl, actual studies of putting telemetry and colors, radio colors on Pacific fishers. I mean, we'd like to find out also what impacts them. And environmentalists basically have come in and said we're gonna shut down these operations too. Without some of these projects on the Sierra, we will not have enough material to bring in this winter to continue operations next spring. So again, we're in high gear, trying to work with Senator Feinstein, our other local officials, and we really appreciate your support in these efforts.
Thank you. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, by way of disclosure, most of you know I used to work in the timber industry. I represented three of those sawmills, and also worked for the Dusons for a brief period of time as legal counsel. I was involved, my first involvement was with the mediation on the Sequoia National Forest Management Plan. One of the things that Steve pointed out to you was the catastrophic decline in terms of timber sales. But what he didn't say was, but it's implicit in it, is that just because they quit cutting trees, doesn't mean the trees quit growing. The sustainable yields on these forests are far in excess of what was being sold in the future, and so that's why we have this problem, is that the vegetation continues to grow, we're not managing the forest, and so the catastrophic fire risks continue to grow with that. You can leave aside the issues of global warming and so forth. In my mind, that's only become another one of those kinds of hide-the-ball things by the environmental movement, because they're trying to blame, they're trying to look at future fires and put the blame on global warming. I don't care how hot it is, if you have nothing to burn, it is, there's not gonna be a problem. And the problem is that we have created such a fuel load, allowed such a fuel load to develop in these forests, we're gonna have catastrophic fires. I don't care if we have global cooling, we're gonna have catastrophic fires, because the fuel loadings have gone unbelievably high. The research has been done, the way these forests looked in 1870s, when they were under the management, basically, the end of the management of the Indian population was a much more open forest. I believe the fuel loads were something of the magnitude of 10 or 12 tons per acre. Now, it's not uncommon to find 400 and 500 tons per acre of fuel that is just sitting there ready to explode, and it will explode. And what's happened, I point out that, looking at this map, you don't look at Tahoe and see that as being a high-risk area, and yet look at the fire that's occurred there right now as we are sitting here, and it's because of the lack of management. I can't tell you how much I support this particular proposal, and Kent did a good job. The real problem here is a judiciary that's out of control in the Ninth Circuit, because judicial discretion is supposed to be in place when you have responsible people who come up and testify, experts who will testify about, just as was pointed out, the real risk for the fisher or for any species in the Sierra Nevada is not logging, it is fire, and yet the judge ignores that. That is not the place, that is an activist judge. He's supposed to give discretion to the experts of the agency, and here we have a failure to do that. So I strongly support this. Whatever we can do in terms of assisting Senator Feinstein, she's been a big help to us in Tulare County in the past, and, you know, we need to help support this industry, not only to protect those jobs, but to protect, as he said, the infrastructure, so that we can start to begin this process of managing our forests again. And believe me, we're gonna need a lot more sawmills if we're gonna ever get on top of this.
Only thing I would add, in addition to this resolution, I'd like to propose another one, that we rally behind Supervisor Worthley and get him on the Ninth Circuit. Hey, you never know.
Yeah, you never know.
I don't mean to make light, it's very important, and it saddens me that, you know, every time I think we've hit the low point, that people are gonna get it and start understanding, we don't, we find another one. But how low is that low point when there aren't?
I suspect a few Sierra Club members have had their cabins burned up in Lake Tahoe.
Yes. Oh, you couldn't laugh.
I also want to say I really support this. I have a place up in the mountains, and I've seen how the forest- I have a place up in the mountains, and I've seen how the forests have changed over the years, how choked up they are, and how we've lost our habitat, not only for the spotted owl and the fisher, but our deer, bears, there's nothing, they can't get through it. Somebody told me the other day, said, hey, we were going to the mountains, and there was a bunch of deer going up the road. They had to go up the road, they couldn't get through the habitat. It's all choked up with the snow brush and stuff, with the big, long thorns on it. So, no, this is a catastrophic problem. We must work on it. The silent majority must speak up, and we must move forward and try to get back the control and management of our forests. It has to be done, and I support this fully.
Okay, we'll nominate you for Congress next.
In the last couple of visits we've made to Washington, D.C., we've expressed our concern about South Sierra Nevadas and about the Sierra Forest Products Mill. With Feinstein, with Boxer, with Costa, with Nunes, they've all been approached, and the Forest Service. And Supervisor Worthley and I, we took before, we discussed that matter. I think we have the right focus, especially from Feinstein, to lead the way. We've supported you before in resolutions, and will support you, continue to support you. I sit on the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board, and everybody on that Board understands the number-one asset of the Sierra Nevada mountains is not its timber, it's the watershed. And to protect that watershed, you need a sawmill. And also, with this 2525 program that's going around the United States, they're looking to have 25 percent of our energy will become from renewable resources. A large portion of that 25 percent is from the forest, as using the, cleaning the underbrush off, using it for a biogeneration plant. So hopefully, we can get the federal government to step up and say, to locate those plants on federal property, close to the source of the product, and also close to transmission lines. So there's a lot of positive things happening right now that I think we need to continue to push forward in support of your mill and all the mills throughout the Pacific Northwest. So I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moving seconded, passed your vote. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Public comments. Seeing none, move to Supervisors of Matters. Supervisor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity last week to visit with some of the Governor's senior staffers on issues of importance to Tulare County, issues that impact the budget, issues that impact our daily life. Those talks continue. I've actually kind of been doing that on a weekly basis, because as you all know, I was a truck driver in another life, and I enjoy making a turnaround trip to Sacramento once a week. Without, yeah, man, without making light of it, the Governor's staff get it, and, you know, I think that some of our issues can be resolved and saved. The problem is the legislature. I'm not exactly sure up there who gets it. We do have some friends and some that do, and some that don't, but I will continue on that quest. I also had an opportunity to, I'm a newly-elected Board Member for California Elected Women for Education and Research. We had a Board meeting that we hope to, working through elected bodies, to have a little more emphasis on things that are important to local governments in particular. Also had an opportunity to attend the retirement party for Norma Lammers from the Finance Corps, although this is, I think, her second retirement. She's still not leaving. She's going to be a consultant for a while, but it was a good opportunity to meet with folks that make decisions on our behalf throughout the state. The only other matter I have, I think, is, before this Board meets again, I will be attending the National Association of Counties Annual Meeting. As you know, I serve on the Board of Directors. I also have the honor of serving as the membership steering chair for the United States. Happy to report to you, as I will to them, in a couple of weeks, that membership is at an all-time high and retention doing better than ever. I've been asked if I would like to chair that committee again next year. My immediate response was no. You guys think I don't know how to say no, but I did say no, because I figured if nothing else, I would rest on my laurels and go out on top, because I didn't know if I could repeat that performance next year. But suffice it to say, NACO, I think, is a good advocate for these issues here. It's one of the good, one of the reasons why I believe that our participation in the National Association of Counties is important. We may not find any other friends in California, but they're friends with forest issues throughout the United States. And NACO does a very good job of advocacy on some issues that are of great importance to this county. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
You gonna do this?
What you want to have?
Okay.
No, you can do it.
I have Tulare County Gang Task Force Committee has been meeting over the last few months here in this building, and on July 12th at 4:00 p.m., we are going to have a meeting over at the Workforce Investment Department, where we will unveil the commitment, which is a, will be a, will identify three pilot programs in the unincorporated communities of Tulare County, where we will look to enlarge existing programs, youth programs that are working with youth. Right now, we have requests from Ivanhoe, Goshen, and Cutler and Orocy to be included in that selection process. So this is an opportunity for you to pass the word out through the rest of the unincorporated communities, that we'll be looking to partner with some existing programs and help them with funding, and help them to expand their program, attract more kids, and work on the game activity in those communities. So if you would put out the word, we're going to invite police agencies, probation, DA, schools, churches will be invited to this. So this will be the one meeting where we bring everyone together, lay out our plans to assist them, and then at that point, we'll start working with various programs to identify three that we'll take on for the first year. And at the end of that year, we'll assess our success in those three communities, and we'll look forward to expanding that into further communities in years two, three, and four, and so forth.
Wish I could be there. I have a pension benefits commission meeting that day in Burlingame, but my spirit will be there.
Well, we want your churches and your youth programs and your
That I can do.
Nonprofits. We want those folks to be there.
Yesterday, Mr. Innison, I had the joy of sitting through two hours of sexual harassment training. We're fully briefed and raring to go now.
Fort enough to not go.
Yeah. I anticipate that I may be going to Sacramento tomorrow to testify on Senator Machado's bill that would augment the Air Pollution Control District San Joaquin Board, and one of our last opportunities to speak at a committee meeting in our opposition to this Board, you know, has taken action, as I believe every Board within the San Joaquin Valley, Air Pollution Control District, all the counties, I believe, have taken action of opposition, as has the Board itself at last week's meeting. But Senator Machado was anything but shy about continuing his efforts. We've beaten his back for the last four years, but we're always afraid the stars will align a certain way, then it will go forward. I guess that's enough.
Last week, we had our little test that Success Dam on the release got up to 3,000 second feet. I guess we got by unscathed. I don't think anybody drowned. We did have a guy sleeping under the bridge, but I don't think the water got close to him. But the channel really sucked that water up. I don't think it got past Westwood, and so it just goes to show you how dry the channel is, but we did have some debris problems, but we had people right on spot to take care of any problems that might develop, like in the slews and stuff. So pretty uneventful, actually. It was kind of nice to see some water in the river again, going down through there, but hopefully now we got the channel wet, so when we start irrigation, the water will go on out to the people that really want it. Also, had a chance to go up and tour UC Merced last Friday, and Chancellor King and Larry Salinas gave us a real good tour. We toured the library, the classroom buildings, and their dorm areas. They've got enough dorm area there now for almost 1,000 students. Their central plant, which is the heating and cooling system that heats and cools the whole campus, and looking at the architecture that they had there was very excellent. They use a lot of shading, a lot of overhang on the buildings to keep them cooler. They utilize the breeze, they've got to open the bottom parts of the bellies completely up when the weather's perfect, and they can just let the weather take its course. Beautiful campus, maybe a quarter-built. It's going to be a good link for the new engineering high school that is being built over in the Strathmore area, because this is an engineering major college. So hopefully, we'll see some engineers coming out of the Strathmore and eastern side of the county, and going up there and becoming engineers, which we're really a shortage of.
And come back here.
Right. Come back here, hopefully, and work for the county. But real nice tour. Campus is absolutely gorgeous, a beautiful setting, lots of water. It's right on Yosemite Lake, which is, you can see back in the background behind it, but beautiful campus, and almost makes you wish you were a student. Thank you.
Yeah, never too old. Something I don't wish to be again as a student. I think one of the main issues the Board of Supervisors is facing right now, and many Boards across California, is the Williamson Act, making sure that it is funded. We're getting strong messages from the Governor's Office that it's in jeopardy, and it's in jeopardy by the Governor, not the legislature. So we need to continue the pressure on it, and it means what, $4.3 million to, it's $3.4 million to Tulare County in tax revenue. They're saying that because we received all this increase through the real estate boom we had recently, that we can absorb that. Well, that's not true, because they cut us back so much before the real estate boom. We're not even, we're just trying to catch up. Even this year's questionable if we can proceed on the path we follow with previous years. Friday, Counselor and I will be traveling to Sacramento to go to a climate change work study group with CSAC, which is political, correct word, way of saying global warming. We're trying to be there on the base level of this organization to make sure that when we come for recommendations to CSAC, that we're well represented.
We appreciate that, Supervisor, because I know who else is going to be there, so God bless you.
Well, you know, it brings up the subject. Steve was in Sacramento. We've been to Sacramento a lot. We spend a lot of time outside of the county, and as I gave my county speech about the rock rolling down the hill, it's never been more true than it has been in this past year, that we're just trying to protect ourselves, Tulare County, from the legislation, both on a state and federal level. So we do spend a lot of time out. And Sunday morning at 8:00, on Moonee's, on Lover's Lane at the State Fire Station, CDF, there'll be a changeover of the fire departments with the official transferring of keys and, I'm sure, other speeches. And at 2:00 Sunday afternoon, there's a reception at the Lemon Cove Fire Station for reopening the fire station and taking over the fire service in Lemon Cove. I'd like to end the note today on a positive, real positive announcement that Supervisor Cox will let me announce here, is that we received our first check. Tulare County Transportation Authority received its first check from the state of California from Major R. Amount of that check is $1,053,125.96. So it was a very pleasant surprise, the amount of the check.
Notice that they also have Deputy Executive Director on there. Does Mr. Smalley also have to sign that check? Possibly.
That's him.
That's him.
That's me.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Attendances. County Counselor, we have an urgency item on closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before we get to closed session, I have to ask your Board to add an item to your closed session agenda. Your Board was served yesterday with lawsuit Cornielsen, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, versus Board of Supervisors, et cetera, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 07224228. It does seek interim relief, urgency relief, and accordingly, we need instruction from your Board, and of course, you do not meet again until the 17th.
We hear this matters urgency item.
Second. Moving seconded, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously.
So in addition to the item that we just discussed, Mr. Chairman, you have items A through E on your Board's closed session regular agenda and addendum. I do expect announcement now.